Everyone and thank you for joining us tonight for the public hearing for the project development and environment, or PDNE study for State Road 789, John Ringling Boulevard in Sarasota County. The limits of this study are from Bird Key Drive to Sarasota Harbor West. My name is Brett Barrowby and I will be the online moderator. Tonight, the Florida Department of Transportation, or FDOT, is conducting the in-person hearing at St. Armin's Key Lutheran Church. Thank you for attending the live online auction. We will be starting the formal hearing momentarily. Before we join the in-person hearing, we would like to review the GoToWebinar control panel. This is located to the right-hand side of your screen. If it is minimized, click on the orange arrow at the top to open it up. If you would like to make a formal comment tonight, please type your name, organization, if you are affiliated with one, and address into the questions pane at the bottom of the control panel. Once you are asked to unmute to speak, you will click on the microphone near the top of the control panel and turn it green. You can enter your request to speak at any point in the hearing tonight. If you are joining us by phone this evening, you will see the panel at the bottom of your screen. If you are on a tablet, it will be at the top. If you would like to request to speak, please click on the question mark icon, and it will open the field to type your name, address, and organization if you are affiliated with. If you happen to have any technical difficulties, please visit support.goto.com for help. In a moment, the FDOT project manager, Patrick Bateman, will begin the hearing. Once the hearing has been opened, the project video will play, followed by a short intermission. You will then move to the in-person comments or testimony, followed by online testimony. You will hear the comments from the in-person hearing just as the in-person attendees will hear comments from online attendees. We will begin the meeting, the hearing momentarily.
Check, one, two, one, two. Are you good?
All right, we are about to start the formal portion of the hearing, so if you please take your seats. Good evening. The Florida Department of Transportation welcomes you to the public hearing for the project development and environment for PDNE study for Little Ringling, State Road 789 in Sarasota County. My name is Patrick Bateman. I am the FDOT project manager. Thank you for attending this event in person or online. Here with me tonight are FDOT representatives and the members of the consultant project team who have been available to answer questions during the open house. We would like to thank any elected officials for your attendance and participation in this hearing. We encourage you to sign in with your name and the office you represent for the project record. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to present the proposed improvements and share the engineering and environmental analysis conducted to date. The public hearing also serves as an official forum providing an opportunity for members of the public to express their opinions regarding the proposed improvements. We bring the proposed improvements to a public hearing so that we can hear your views and comments. We want to hear from people with local knowledge and we want to hear what you like and don't like about the proposed improvements. It is important that you express your views at this stage of the project when the flexibility still exists to incorporate those views into study documents. Final decisions are made using these documents. This public hearing is using both an in-person and online format. All hearing materials detailing and documenting project analysis and recommendations, such as a project video, environmental and engineering documents, and informational graphics have been available to the public online since February 29th, 2024. These materials are also available for viewing at the venue here tonight. Additionally, project engineering and environmental documents are available for review at the Selby Library, 1331 First Street, Sarasota, Florida, 34236, and the FDOT District One Manatee Operations Center, 14000, East State Road 64, Bradenton, Florida, 34212, as well as on the project webpage. Tonight, we will show a project video which will explain the project in detail. Following the video will be a 10-minute intermission. Finally, we'll open the formal comment period where you will have the opportunity to provide statements at the microphone, or you may provide your comments directly to the court reporter or in writing. Now, I will read the following information for the record. This is a public hearing for Little Ringling, SR 789, PDNE study from Bird Key Drive to Sarasota Harbor West in Sarasota County, Florida. Financial project ID number 436680-1-22-01. This public hearing is being conducted by the Florida Department of Transportation with the Office of Environmental Management as the approving authority. It is being held at St. Armin's Key Lutheran Church, 40 North Adams Drive, Sarasota, Florida, 34236, on Thursday, March 21st, 2024 at 6:00 p.m. This project is described as a PDNE study to evaluate and document potential engineering and environmental effects of the proposed replacement alternatives for the existing bridges. The limits of the proposed improvements are from Bird Key Drive to Sarasota Harbor West in Sarasota County. The hearing is being conducted in accordance with all state and federal laws, as well as Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990 and Title VI of Civil Rights Act of 1964 and related statutes. It is also being conducted to meet all applicable executive orders. For a listing of these regulations, please see the hearing display boards here tonight or on the project webpage. If anyone here feels they have been discriminated against, they may complete one of the forms located at the signing table to meld a completed form to the address listed on the display board. This information is also available online on the FDOT's Equal Opportunity webpage. At this time, we will play the project video.
Welcome to the Florida Department of Transportation's public hearing for the Little Ringling, State Road 789, project development and environment for PDNE study. We appreciate your attendance and participation. This public hearing is being conducted to give the public the opportunity to review and provide comments on the proposed preferred alternative and associated effects on the social, economic, cultural, natural, and physical environment. The purpose of this PDNE study is to evaluate engineering and environmental data and document information that will aid FDOT District One and the FDOT Office of Environmental Management, or OEM, in determining the type, preliminary design, and location of the proposed improvements. The study begins at Bird Key Drive and extends approximately .75 miles west to Sarasota Harbor West along John Ringling Boulevard and John Ringling Causeway, State Road 789, in Sarasota County. State Road 789 serves as the primary connection from downtown Sarasota to Bird Key, Coon Key, St. Armin's Key, Lido Key, and Longboat Key. The Little Ringling Bridge portion crosses the Coon Key Waterway, which is a navigable waterway. The need for proposed improvements on the Little Ringling bridges are indicated by the condition of the bridges due to their advanced age, designation as emergency or hurricane evacuation routes, and substandard bicycle and pedestrian facilities. The FDOT proposes replacing the Little Ringling bridges to address the age and operational deficiencies of the existing bridges. The proposed improvements will enhance safety, improve traffic operations, add a transit lane, replace the existing sidewalks with shared-use paths, harden infrastructure against future storms, and increase the bridge's resiliency to storm events. Within the project limits, the existing State Road 789 is classified as an urban minor arterial and consists of a four-lane divided facility between Bird Key Drive and Sarasota Harbor West. The travel lanes along the roadway are approximately 12 feet wide with 10-foot shared-use paths on either side of the facility. Today, there are no designated bicycle facilities within the project limits. The posted speed limit is 35 miles per hour. The existing twin bridges were constructed in 1958. Several sections of the deck were replaced on the westbound bridge in 2016, along with other repair work occurring intermittently throughout the years. The travel lanes on the bridges are 11 feet wide with 5-foot sidewalks on either side of the facility. The posted speed limit is 35 miles per hour. Throughout this PDNE study process, FDOT has looked at different alternatives to address the age and operational deficiencies of the bridges and enhance safety conditions. At the Alternatives Public Workshop, held in person on April 5th, 2022, and virtually on April 7th, 2022, we asked for your input on proposed improvements to State Road 789. Based on your comments, as well as additional environmental and engineering analyses, a preferred alternative has been selected for State Road 789. The preferred alternative for State Road 789 proposes to replace the existing twin bridges with a single bridge. The single bridge typical section includes two 10-and-a-half-foot wide travel lanes, a dedicated 11-foot transit lane, 2-and-a-half-foot inside shoulder, 5-and-a-half-foot bike lane, and a 14-foot shared-use path in each direction. The total width of the bridge is 114 feet 3 inches. The posted speed limit is expected to be 35 miles per hour. The new bridge will transition to a divided roadway typical section that includes two 10-and-a-half-foot wide travel lanes, a dedicated 11-foot transit lane, and a 5-foot bike lane in each direction, separated by a median with curb and gutter. This section of roadway also includes a 10-foot shared-use path on both sides of the roadway that connects to the bridge. The posted speed limit is expected to be 35 miles per hour. Throughout this study, the no-build alternative is considered. The no-build alternative assumes that no improvements are made to the Little Ringling bridges through the year 2050, except routine maintenance. Due to the condition of the bridges, the no-build alternative would require increasingly costly and disruptive maintenance and major rehabilitation projects to keep them functional. All projects would require work from barges and many would require periodic lane closures. The no-build alternative does not meet the project's purpose and need and is therefore not recommended as the preferred alternative. However, it will remain under consideration throughout the duration of the PDNE study. For more information on what routine maintenance includes, please view the no-build board. FDOT evaluated various environmental factors relating to the proposed improvements in accordance with the National Environmental Policy Act of 1969, as amended, and other federal requirements. The evaluation considered the effects of reconstructing the Little Ringling bridges on socio-cultural effects, land use, right-of-way requirements, aesthetics, cultural and historic resources, Section 4F and 6F resources, threatened and endangered species, wetlands and floodplains, essential fish habitat, water quality, floodplains, highway traffic noise, contamination, utilities, construction effects, and navigation. Several of these will be discussed further on the following slides. Please refer to your handout and display boards for more details on these items. A cultural resource assessment survey was conducted in accordance with the National Historic Preservation Act of 1966 and Florida statutes. Archaeologists and historians identified no archaeological sites and eight historic resources in the project study area. FDOT found that these resources do not meet the eligibility criteria for inclusion in the National Register of Historic Places, or NRHP, and the State Historic Preservation Officer, or SHIPO, concurred with this determination on June 21st, 2023. Therefore, the FDOT, in consultation with the SHIPO, has determined that the proposed project will result in no historic properties affected. Section 4F of the U.S. Department of Transportation Act of 1966 requires agencies using USDOT funds to consider impacts to public parks, recreation areas, wildlife refuges, and historic or archaeological sites of national, state, or local significance. The project team examined the project area for publicly owned properties that may be affected under Section 4F of the U.S. Department of Transportation Act of 1966. The following resources were identified and had the following determinations: Sarasota Bay Blue Way paddling trail, temporary occupancy exemption; Bird Key Park city-owned portion, no use; Bird Key Park FDOT-owned portion, not applicable; and Longboat Key Sun Trail, exempt. As proposed, the project will utilize .62 acres of Bird Key Park, located within the FDOT's existing State Road 789 right-of-way, to relocate a portion of the Bird Key Park Multi-Use Recreational Trail, or MRT. This portion was authorized by a lease agreement between the FDOT and City of Sarasota. As this portion occurs within state transportation right-of-way, Section 4F is not applicable to this portion of Bird Key Park. Section 6F of the Land and Water Conservation Act of 1965 requires that the conversion of lands or facilities acquired with Land and Water Conservation Act funds under the state assistance program coordinated with the National Park Service. As proposed, the project will utilize .62 acres of Bird Key Park within FDOT right-of-way, for which LWCF funds were previously used for improvements. The project will only utilize this FDOT-owned portion of the park to relocate a portion of the Bird Key Park MRT. As part of the project development process and in accordance with Section 6F, the FDOT presented the proposed impacts to the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, or FDEP. The FDEP concluded that no significant or adverse impacts would result, and further coordination with the National Park Service was not needed. Protected species and habitats are allowed special protection under the Endangered Species Act of 1973, as amended, and Florida statutes. FDOT assessed species within the project limits and through ongoing coordination with U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and the National Marine Fisheries Service, has determined that the proposed project may affect, but is not likely to adversely affect, the existence of certain federally listed threatened or endangered species. The wildlife species include several species of marine turtles, manatee, small-toothed sawfish, federally protected wading birds, and the Florida bonded bat. Through coordination with the federal and state natural resource agencies, various species-specific protection measures, environmental permit conditions, and construction best management practices will be implemented to ensure that the effect of construction of this project on state and federal-protected species remains minimal. If the preferred alternative proceeds through to future phases, the FDOT is committed to working with natural resource agencies to meet all environmental requirements. FDOT evaluated wetlands within the project limits in accordance with Executive Order 11990, Protection of Wetlands. The proposed improvements will affect approximately .03 acres of mangrove wetlands and .05 acres of seagrass, with a possible temporary construction impact of .12 acres of seagrass. The department will take all practical measures to mitigate wetland impacts resulting from the project's construction and will meet all requirements of Florida statutes in the United States Code. The project has been evaluated for potential floodplain involvement in accordance with Executive Order 11988, Floodplain Management. The entire project is located within 100-year floodplain zones AE and VE and will involve minimal encroachment within a coastal floodplain. For enhanced resiliency, the proposed bridge will be approximately 10-and-a-half feet higher in the center and 7.2 feet higher at the ends than the existing bridges. There is no significant change in flood risk and the proposed improvements will not result in adverse flooding or floodplain impacts in the project vicinity. There will be no significant change in the potential for interruption or termination of emergency services or emergency evacuation routes as a result of project construction. FDOT evaluated essential fish habitat within the project area as required by the 1998 amendment to the Magnusson Stevens Fishery Conservation and Management Act. Within the study area, essential fish habitat occurs within the Coon Key Waterway in Sarasota Bay. Due to the limited impacts and as mangrove and seagrass mitigation will be provided, the FDOT has determined that the project will have minimal potential for adverse effects to essential fish habitat. The effects of traffic noise associated with the preferred alternative have been evaluated in accordance with Title 23, Code of Federal Regulations, Part 772, and the FDOT's PDNE manual. Based on traffic modeling analysis, potential noise barriers were evaluated adjacent to impacted portions of the Plymouth Harbor Facility and Bird Key Park. However, barriers at these locations would not meet the reasonable cost-effectiveness criteria. Therefore, potential noise barriers are not currently recommended for further consideration for this project. However, this will be reevaluated as necessary prior to the advancement of the future project phases. Application of the FDOT's standard specifications for road and bridge construction will minimize local construction noise and vibration impacts to the greatest extent possible. Results of the study's environmental contamination screening showed that no sites were ranked high for potential contamination. One site was ranked medium for potential contamination, and two sites were ranked low for potential contamination. For the sites that are ranked low for contamination, no further action is required at this time. For the medium-risk site, the FDOT project manager and the district contamination impact coordinator will coordinate on further actions during the design phase that must be taken to address contamination issues. Before construction, specially trained crews will address contamination at the applicable locations as required. Please see the concept boards on display for more information. For navigation, the proposed deck elevation at the center of the new bridge for the preferred alternative would be approximately 26.2 feet, making it approximately 10-and-a-half feet higher than the existing bridges. The minimum vertical clearance at the ends of the bridge would be approximately 13 feet, which is around 7.2 feet higher than the existing bridges. The additional height is to address storm surge and FDOT corrosion criteria. The higher end spans allow for a pedestrian walkway under the ends of the bridge. This will provide safe passage under the roadway for pedestrians and other users of shared-use paths. The Coon Key Waterway is navigable, but does not have a U.S. Coast Guard designated navigational channel. The new bridge will provide additional vertical clearance for local boaters. Coordination with the U.S. Coast Guard will be completed during the project's design and environmental permitting efforts to obtain a Coast Guard bridge permit prior to construction commencement. There are no anticipated adverse impacts to disadvantaged or legally protected populations, land use, aesthetics, water quality, air quality, or utilities. The preferred alternative will not require the acquisition of property or the relocation of any residences or businesses. An evaluation matrix showing a detailed comparison of the preferred alternative and the no-build alternative is provided in the project handout and is also on display here this evening. The matrix shows potential effects to the social, cultural, natural, and physical environment. The estimated cost to replace the Little Ringling bridges includes approximately $2.4 million for preliminary design, $900,000 for final design, $30,000 for wetland mitigation, $0 for right-of-way acquisition, and $1.5 million for maintenance. The total estimated construction cost for the project is approximately $48.5 million. The cost for construction engineering and inspection is estimated at $5.8 million. The department's preliminary estimate of total project cost is approximately $60 million. For more information on the project funding and cost, please view your handout or the funding board. At this time, the FDOT's tentative five-year work program includes funding for construction in fiscal year 2028. PDNE and design have already received funding. The department anticipates completion of this PDNE study by late 2024. The study schedule is on display this evening and can be found in the project handout. We encourage you to review project information and provide comments tonight during this public hearing event through the website, by email, or by mail, postmarked or sent by April 4th, 2024, to 801 North Broadway Avenue, Bartow, Florida, 33830. All hearing materials presented tonight are available to the public on the project webpage and will remain posted for your review. The technical documents are also available for review in person at the Selby Library, located at 1331 First Street, Sarasota, Florida, 34236, until April 4th, 2024. Selby Library is open Monday through Thursday from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. and Friday through Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. You may also call the library at 941-861-1100 for more information on operational hours. If you would like to review these materials at the FDOT Manatee Operations Center, please make an appointment by calling the front desk at 941-708-4400. You may also visit the project website at www.swflroads.com forward slash project forward slash 436680-1 for the latest study information, schedule, and upcoming events. The purpose of this PDNE study is to evaluate engineering and environmental data and document information that will aid FDOT District One and the FDOT Office of Environmental Management in determining the type, preliminary design, and location of proposed improvements. This hearing follows all federal and state rules and regulations. Please see the hearing display board for specific information. The environmental review, consultation, and other actions required by applicable federal environmental laws for this project are being or have been carried out by the Florida Department of Transportation, FDOT, pursuant to 23 United States of Transportation (FDOT), pursuant to 23 United States Code 327, and a memorandum of understanding dated May 26, 2022, and executed by the Federal Highway Administration and FDOT. This hearing is also conducted in accordance with the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990 and with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 and related statutes. Anyone who feels that they have been discriminated against with regard to race, color, national origin, age, sex, religion, disability, or family status may complete one of the forms located at the sign-in table and mail the completed form to the address listed on the poster board. And finally, an FDOT safety moment. Speeding and aggressive driving endangers not only the life of the speeder, but all the people on the roadway around them, including law enforcement officers. Stop speeding before it stops you. Thank you for your interest and participation in the Little Ringling PDNE Study Public Hearing and for taking time to watch this project video.
In a moment, we'll have a 10-minute intermission so you can review the displays, talk with members of the project team, and ask any questions that you may have before we begin the testimony portion of the hearing. Any moment, we'll have an intermission, a 10-minute intermission so you can review the displays, talk to members of the project team, and ask some questions before we begin the testimony portion of the hearing. If you would like to make a verbal comment here tonight, please fill out a speaker card and give it to anyone with a name tag during the intermission. If you do not wish to speak at the microphone, you may provide your comments in writing or directly to the court reporter at the comment table. All comments are weighed equally. Please note, we will not be responding to questions or comments at this time. Our focus tonight is recording your verbal comments. The time is now 6:24. We will resume at 6:34.
For online attendees, ready for intermission, I want to go over again how you can make a formal verbal comment online. We will use the chat or question function on the control panel to request to speak. If you are on a computer, your control panel is to the right. If it is minimized, click the orange arrow to expand it. The question box is near the bottom of the control. On a tablet or phone, you can open this by clicking the question mark on the control panel that is either across the top or bottom of your screen. If you happen to have any technical difficulties, please visit support.goto.com for help. If you would like to make a comment during the formal testimony portion, please type your name, your organization if any, and your address in the box. We will call on you to speak during the testimony portion.
All right, we're going to begin the public testimony portion of the hearing, so if you'd please take your seats. All right, we welcome your spoken or written comments that will help us make this important decision. The comment period for this hearing will remain open 14 days after this hearing. Anyone wishing to submit written statements or other exhibits in place of or in addition to verbal statements may do so. You have until April 4, 2024, to postmark or submit comments to become a part of the official hearing record. Again, every comment carries equal weight. Please see your handout, the display boards, or the project webpage for contact and mailing information. We will not be responding to questions or comments at this time. Our focus tonight is recording your verbal comments. However, we will post a summary of the comments received on the project webpage approximately 30 days following the close of the comment period. If you would like to have additional discussion regarding the project, you may contact the FDOT project manager, Patrick Bateman, at the information listed on your handout and on the webpage. In-person speakers, please direct all comments clearly into the microphone and toward the hearing moderator all times. This will ensure that your comments are captured accurately for the project record. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Jocelyn will signal when you have a minute left, and Jocelyn will signal a second time when the three-minute response time has expired. Once again, we are not responding to questions or comments during testimony. We will now call on those who have registered to speak in person. We will start with Casey Gonsmart, and for the next person to prepare, next will be Bill Hatch. So, Casey, can you please come forward and state your name and address, and if you represent an organization, municipality, or other public body?
Good afternoon, my name is Casey Gonsmart. We operate a business here on St. Armans Circle. We also have property in Longbow Key, and I have been a resident of Sarasota at Lido Key, Bird Key, St. Armans Circle, as well as Longbow Key. So, we've been in business for 65 years. So, I'm here representing the people of St. Armans, the people of Longbow Key, and the people all of Lido. We need this new bridge, and it's the only alternative. It says it's a preferred alternative, but I think it's the only way you need to go. What we would like to have is an opportunity to understand what access you'll have to the Keys for Safety and otherwise during the period of construction, and an estimate of how long this construction may take, because this is something that's going to impact us economically, and it's going to be something that's going to make everyone anxious for a period of time, even though the result will be terrific. But during the period of construction, we like to have a little bit of opportunity to make it accessible and possibly marketing it in a way to let people know that are visiting Sarasota, that the bridges are open, and they're open in a similar style as what they are now, and that they can feel confident coming over the bridges while you're constructing the new bridge. It's a matter of perception. People believe when they see a lot of cranes and a lot of activity that there might be something negative happening. So, we'd like the FDOT to see if they could put out the word, along with merchants and the residents, that we're open for business. That's it, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next up is Bill Hatch.
Good evening, my name is Bill Hatch. I live at Sarasota Harbors West, and today's takeaway that I'd like you to get from my comments is, we don't have a capacity problem, we have a fishing problem. And what I mean by that is, at the end of the day, with the new bridge proposals, you're still going to have four lanes, they're going to be 10 feet higher, but you're going to take valuable right-of-way from Bird Key Park, almost three quarters of an acre. You're going to disrupt the environment, like there's another quarter of an acre, and you're going to condition 20 million in project costs just in the first phase. I actually hike, bike, or drive the bridge three or four times a day, and it's really the lack of enforcement and no fishing. You have five-foot-wide medians, plenty of room for people to pass on both sides, but when you have fishing poles, lures, and coolers, lawn chairs, and all the things that goes along with that, that leads to the congestion. Just a couple of the quick sound bites. I do have a background in commercial real estate, 35 years as a project manager. Every project is characterized by three things: change orders, which leads to cost of runs, and schedule delays. Final thing is, I lived through the Clearwater Beach Flyover Project, and this is, you're setting yourself up, folks, for years, not months of pounding pilings, and you actually feel your room shake like a mini earthquake five days a week. Thank you for your time. It's our mission.
Thank you for your comment. All right, any of those attending in person who has not spoken but would like to speak? All right, we will move to the online portion now.
Now, we will call on those attending online who have signed up to speak. First, we will call upon Karen and Ernie Smith. Please unmute yourself and state your name and address, and if you represent an organization, municipality, or other public.
I'm here with my wife Karen. We are residents on Lido Key. I am just offering to support the comments from the first speaker, that this is an essential project that needs to get done, the preferred bridge alternative. The preferred bridge alternative is clearly a, going to ease the transition of traffic from the Little Ringling to the Big Ringling Bridge. It's going to be less expensive in the long run, it's going to be safer for all types of vehicle traffic, and while it's going to be inconvenient and disruptive during construction, we're better off biting the bullet now and not passing that burden on to others. Um, I also share the question, it's about the construction disruption while this is going on. We'd certainly want to understand how's traffic flow is going to be affected so that we can try and make sure it's, you know, optimal. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else attending online who has not spoken but would like to speak? Seeing no one, we will return to our in-person moderator to close out the hearing.
Anyone here, uh, would like to speak? Go ahead. Oh, can you, can you...
Yes, I'm very concerned about the nature, the environment with this, and, um, so if we do nothing until 2015, perhaps they'll have more efficient, better ways to build without, just, you know, this disruption to the, the environment, I guess. So, that's my concern. Maybe we need to, uh, think about that before we just go into this, um, right now. My thought.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, uh, once again, written statements and exhibits in place of or in addition to verbal comments will be accepted and recorded as part of this hearing if postmarked or sent by 14 days after this hearing on April 4, 2024. After the comment period closes, the project team will compile all comments and together with the engineering and environmental work that has been done, make a final recommendation that will be submitted to the FDOT Office of Environmental Management for approval. We will publish the approval of the preferred alternative in the Sarasota Herald Tribune and post the approval on the project webpage. The verbatim transcript of this hearing's proceedings, together with all written statements or exhibits received, and all studies, displays, and informational material presented with this hearing, will be made part of the project decision-making process and will be available for public review upon request at the FDOT District 1 Headquarters, 801 North Broadway Avenue, Bartow, Florida, 33830. Thank you for attending this public hearing and for providing your input in this project. It is now 6:45. I hereby officially close the public hearing for Little Ringling SR789 PDNE Study from Bird Key Drive to Sarasota Harbor West in Sarasota County, Florida. Thank you again, and have a good evening.